Welcome to the Tuesday, January 6th Council Meeting. And we will start with our roll call. City Clerk?
Mayor Brinkman?
Here.
Mayor Protem Valdez?
Present.
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Here.
Councilmember Elrod?
Here.
Councilmember Fay?
Here.
Councilmember Schlechter?
Here.
Will you rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Was that what it was?
Okay, Council, this evening, we've got some changes to the agenda. We are going to pull under General Business Resolution 9, 2018, and Resolution 10, 2018. Those issues are being taken off the agenda. The issue is moving to a mediation, and if it needs to reappear, then we'll put it back on the agenda. We're also going to take a motion to move the ordinance on second reading and public hearing, Ordinance 04, 2018, regarding the safety and protection of wildlife. And I'm going to -- staff has prepared a motion for this, so I'm going to ask Kyle to please read the motion.
I move to continue the public hearing for Ordinance 04-2018 to March 6, 2018, at 6:30 PM, with the study session scheduled for discussion at the February 20th study session.
And I need a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And any discussion?
Yes. This is the ordinance about wildlife, right?
Correct.
Yes, okay. I know that I can't do a second motion right now, but I would prefer to see it indefinitely postponed because it has so many problems in it that we would be doing ourselves a favor, both as a council and as representatives of the constituency, to start over. And I would like to list some of the problems that I see in it. And first of all, the ordinance that we have before us now is significantly different from what was passed on First Read.
Councilmember Fay? I would suggest, though, that the motion that's on the floor is to move this to a study session. It's not a motion to discuss the ordinance, so if we can stay on the topic of removing this to a study session.
Oh, okay. Then what I'm talking about is a reason not to move it to a study session. Because if we move it directly to a study session as it is right now, we are accepting that the public has already heard the ordinance on the first reading, and then we would be considering it on a second reading now. But the fact is, the public does not know, probably. They have no way of knowing what the ordinance looks like now, which is significantly different from what it looked like when we passed on First Read. The city attorney made significant changes, one of which is extremely awkward and incorrect to have going forward. And it would be a disservice to the public for us to continue with an ordinance that is considerably different from what they think it is.
City Attorney?
Mayor, Council, this is right now, before you run a motion to carry this over, which is what we'd call a presidential motion, which needs to be resolved first. Certainly, at the study session, council can provide, and if council says that you'd like it to return back to a first read, that's what it would do. But at this point, because this is a presidential motion, you really need to resolve the motion to carry over. If that is adopted, then it goes to the study session, and whatever direction council provides to staff, that's what we'll do. If the motion is rejected, then it's now before the council for second read. But you do need to resolve this because it's a presidential motion.
Okay.
So could I ask clarification? So potentially, this could get totally revised, or it could get blown into smithereens and we'd never see it again after a study, as a result of a study session?
Councilmember Cole, members of the council, certainly at the study session, my understanding from a number of council members is you'd like to have more detailed time to discuss this. That's what the purpose of the study session is. And then whatever direction council wishes to give to staff and myself at the study session, that's what we're going to implement. You may decide that you want to go back to first read. If you want to go back to first read, we'll go back to first read. At this point, clearly, I've had a number of concerns expressed by different council members, and the purpose of the study session would be to allow council to spend more time with this. So you may decide at the study session that you wish not to go ahead with this at all. And again, if you provide that direction to me, that's how we're going to approach this. But tonight, what you have in front of you is this presidential motion to continue it to March 6, and to have the study session. So you need to resolve that because it's a presidential motion. You can't discuss the merits without resolving the presidential motion first.
Council, I would suggest that we go ahead and approve this this evening, and then if, in fact, at the study session, we have decided we would like to see something different, this will appear on a March 6 agenda since we have moved it to that, and we can, at that point, postpone indefinitely, which essentially kills it. But that would be probably the cleanest way to deal with this at this point, because we're moving this into a study session, and then depending on the outcome of that, we would make a determination if we bring a new ordinance, repost it for a first and second, and then postpone indefinitely the March 6.
Absolutely. You'd have all those options after the study session.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Okay, ready to vote? This is a vote to approve moving it to a study session on the 20th and second reading on March 6.
The vote is six in favor, with Councilmember Fay voting no. The motion carries six to one.
Okay, this is the moment of the agenda where we have public comment, and the public's invited to come down and speak. We have a three-minute limit. We ask that comments. We don't have any public hearings at this point, so that is a safe place to talk. I have a list here of people who have signed up to speak. Linda Newfinkie is first.
My name is Linda Newfinkie. I live in the 4th District. I have no numbers tonight, but I do have them ready to go. But tonight, I bring up a disturbing incident that could have been handled, easily handled in an open, transparent way. Your law on December 19, 2017, which is from your official record, says, quote, "Council Member Fay moved in Mayor Protem Valdez, with an S, seconded, amend the motion to require that interviews do not begin until the council has received a recommendation from the lift board on the exact number of vacancies as the lift board understands it and the interview process is open to the public," unquote. As you can see, this was approved four to three. Since then, council has ignored and disregarded this motion. Council has even misunderstood the language of the motion. Since it was published on the website as part of your official minutes, there are no excuses not to understand the motion. I do not know how the language could be clearer. Maybe if it would have been written in Russian, as you can see, it might have been easier to understand. But nonetheless, you made an official vote of the council, and it must be carried out. Instead, you, as a council, have done everything to act like a vote was never taken. You could have handled this differently and above board. If it would not have been feasible to implement this motion, an official council vote should have been taken in public to invalidate or rescind the motion. Stand up and do the right thing. Stop your egregious attempts to evade, ignore, and deny the laws that you yourselves made. You don't need to do this, and it could have been handled much differently. I'm also concerned that putting this matter into the realm of attorney land is a strong evidence that you've never intended to follow your own law. You're sending a message to your attorneys that it is okay to grasp at straws and make up stuff to justify a motion which you could have easily and legally dismissed. You wasted our attorneys' times. Is that the role that you want the attorneys to have? It's your responsibility to make sure the city implements laws. The city has a responsibility to tell you when you're creating a law that can't be followed. You've heard of fake news, now we have fake laws. So in the future, I strongly encourage you to take steps to avoid such action and strive to conduct yourselves in the spirit of open meetings and transparency. If a law can't be followed, find a way to rescind the motion or publicly dismiss the law and respect your citizens. These silly and immature games should never ever be played in public, ever. Thank you.
Don Burns?
May I wait till you hand those out? Okay. Don Burns, District 4. Good evening, Council, ladies and gentlemen. Regarding preliminary project plan resolution number 34, 2017, on January 16, council passed on a second reading by a 5-1 vote. As staff's presentation and the ordinance made clear its purpose was enabling developers to avoid expending thousands of dollars to ready projects for formal application without knowing in advance whether they would fly. Following public comment, the ensuing dialogue in these chambers was most insightful. Councilmember Fay moved to amend the ordinance so that citizens might also address council on their own behalf, in the very same setting in which staff will now speak on behalf of developers. You rejected that amendment by a 4-2 vote, but why you did so is puzzling. Every day, I get to either see an action or apply my most difficult yet useful university training ever, logic and the scientific method. So it was great to see Ms. Fay apply those principles, arguing that council should hear from citizens as well as from staff on behalf of developers. Yet, the contracted city attorney countered, quote, "The more we move toward a quasi-judicial meeting, the more we're bound to the decisions made or the input given," close quotes. Imagine that, being fearful not that the city would be bound to staff speaking on behalf of developers, but fearful of citizens speaking for themselves. Undeterred, Ms. Fay explained that the ordinance itself states these evaluations are non-binding. Amazingly, the city's contract attorney abandoned the rule of logic and instead appealed to the language of appearance stating, quote, "The more something looks like a public meeting, the more likely a court is to see it as one," close quotes. Dear Council, I understand you don't want to hear any of us complain. And so, with all the respect you demand from us as citizens, please let me say, it looks like your receptivity quotient for hearing from the citizens you're sworn to represent might be enlarged. Could it not? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Don. Jeanne Erickson?
Good evening, City Council and City staff. I would like to thank you for taking the initiative to start a neighborhood task force regarding the property located at Bellevue and Federal. There was a fire there last month, and neighbors have been very concerned about the condition of the property, the condition the property has been in for the last five years. And with the recent fire, most likely started by homeless living at the property, this has created even more urgency to take action with this property owner. I am looking forward to participating with this Columbine Square Neighborhood Group, and thank you for inviting me to participate. Thank you.
Okay, we have no one else signed up. Is there anyone else who would like to come down? Carol?
I've signed up on the wildlife thing, so I'll go ahead and make my comments right now. I have a concern about process, and when I was looking at this second reading tonight, the language is quite different. The way I noticed it is because it's quite a bit longer. And I don't understand how an ordinance that's passed on the first reading gets amended between that time and this evening. And it concerns me. I'm not sure which one of these actually got published in the newspaper, because you're required by charter to do so. And if I have to go back and compare every ordinance from first reading to second reading, then you need to do the same thing, because you're not going to know when it's been changed. It's not in the staff notes. So I'm concerned about a process that, to me, is not open and transparent the way it should be with the public. That being said, one of the changes that was in there was referring to the penalties, and it refers to Title 1817-106. It says, "Any district court may, after making due provision for the rights of innocent persons, enjoy violations of the provisions of Section 1817-104 by issuing appropriate orders and judgments, including but not limited to..." So I went to 1817-104, and it reads, "It is unlawful for any person who knowingly has received any proceeds derived directly or indirectly from a pattern of racketeering activity or through the collection of an unlawful debt to use or invest..." And I won't go on, but I'm not sure what racketeering has to do with wildlife. So there's something that really got derailed in this process, and it concerns me, and I would like to hear from this council, that as a citizen, that when there's a first reading that's passed by this body, that it will not be amended somewhere between the first reading and the second reading. Thank you.
Thank you. You need to come down to the dais. And please state your name and address. Thank you.
My name is Brian Hodges. I live at 605 Front Range Road. And many of us want to speak about the equestrian easement. Should we do that now?
No. That's been pulled. It's been pulled from the agenda. It's no longer a council to be viewed by council.
Well, have a great night.
Thank you, and thanks for coming. It's been pulled from the agenda. It's going to be, at this point, the interested parties have agreed to mediation. So it's not going to come before the council at this point. We are not being asked to make a decision on the matter. If the mediation is unsuccessful, and they want to bring it back to the council, then they'll work it through the staff, and it'll show up on an agenda again and be published. But we won't hear it this evening at all. We're not making any decision on it. And I don't know. The city attorney? Okay, thank you.
And the council can proceed with its business?
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to consent agenda items. Consent agenda items can be pulled by any council member. And consent agenda item one is a resolution authorizing a third amendment to an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Littleton and the urban drainage and flood control district for stream stabilization improvements on Jackass Gulch. Item two is a motion to approve appointments to fill vacancies on the lift board. Item three, an ordinance on first reading, adopting and entering into the trust agreement for the Colorado firefighter heart and cancer benefit trust fund and taking other actions in connection therewith. Item number four is an ordinance on first reading amending the 2018 Littleton Sewer Utility Enterprise budget. And item number five is an approval of the January 16, 2018, regular meeting minutes. Need a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Jerry. Ready to vote?
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, Council, we have no other regular business on the agenda this evening. And the city manager has indicated that he will defer his comments from this evening to the next meeting. And we'll go ahead and do council reports. If anybody has a report immediately following this meeting, we will adjourn here and then go to our study session, and we'll meet in the community room for the study session. So we'll start with Councilmember Elrod. Any report?
No, nothing to report.
Councilmember Fay?
Yes, on January 21st, we had our first District 3 citizens' meeting since the election. We had 50 people there, and that was really exciting. It was in the classroom at the back of the Wilmore Garden Center, so there were lots of windows, lots of old wood, and lots of questions about mainly Littleton Village, lots of concerns about that. I want to emphasize that the city does not support these meetings financially in any way. So Wilmore Garden Center donated the space, Man of Bakery donated the pastries and the coffee. City manager donated his time, and I donated $300 to send out the invitations to the citizens, which will not be reimbursed. I'll do that again in April. April 21st is the second meeting, and that one will be at the Littleton Historical Museum. And that's going to include a behind-the-scenes tour by Tim Nims. And also, there'll be questions and comments addressed by city manager. Another thing that I want to address is that I didn't have a chance to talk about my concerns about the wildlife ordinance. My main concern now, besides process not being followed, and that is clear in the city charter, what the process is supposed to be, and we didn't do it, is that the references to the Colorado revised statute, as Carol Briesak pointed out, is to organize crime and racketeering. Back in March 2010, Littleton made national news for being really legally silly when we, I was here then, but not in this position, when we arrested a young man and put him in jail for overdue library materials. Turns out, we had a law that permitted that, and a judge chose to enforce it. When we do silly things in ordinances, we can end up in silly places. So that was my main reason for wanting to start over with that ordinance, because it has some things in it now that could be really embarrassing, and we just don't want to do that. Thanks.
Councilmember Schlechter?
Two quick items, following up on your meeting at the museum board, or at the museum. I was at the museum board meeting last night, and two items that were discussed, that 2017 set a record for visitors at 166,476, and it was also a record for gift shop sales at over $41,000 from the gift shop. So the director of the museum and library was very pleased with those numbers. And the other item from that was the beautiful new lights in the park, in Ketchikan Park to the north there, nice LED lights that point down and illuminate the ground and not blind you walking around. So that was real nice. And a couple weeks ago, I attended the historic Littleton Inc. meeting about the mid-century modern architecture on Littleton Boulevard. I thought that was a great meeting, the preliminary findings from that inventory of all the buildings there. We have a plethora of beautiful old buildings and some notable architects and great history in that one-mile stretch of land there. That's pretty much unmatched elsewhere in Colorado. So look forward to seeing their findings and what they present to council and to the city.
Thank you. Councilmember Cole?
Nope, nothing.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Yes, last night, I had the opportunity to attend the District 1 Bellevue Corridor meeting. I see a lot of familiar faces from last night, so thank you for attending. Hats off to Joslyn and her team for organizing that. We had, according to Joslyn, over 200 people in attendance throughout the night. It was a two-hour event. That is the place, or if you have any concerns about the Bellevue Corridor, please go on to littletongov.org and express your concerns at the website that's set up for that development or for the Bellevue Corridor change, I guess. So really well done.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Valdez?
And this is a question to the city manager. But we had talked a week or two ago about where people should go when they have wildlife in their yard that are maybe sick or something like that, and I believe you said that we have a place they could go to.
Yeah, the city has received some questions.
Yeah, the city has received some questions about wildlife over the last several months, specifically coyotes. I think they have not been looking too healthy. So the State Division of Wildlife is the one who typically manages that. In fact, our city attorney has arranged a meeting for, they're coming in here next week, I believe.
Actually, this Thursday, I'm going to be meeting with the Division of Wildlife.
Yeah, so I think it's an opportunity to kind of talk with them again about how to manage some of those issues. So we hope to kind of communicate that in the future here on our webpages. We have some out there currently, but we would like to update that based on that conversation.
Perhaps what you could bring up to the wildlife folks is that when our residents call that department, that there's a sick skunk, or maybe there's a sick coyote or something, they seem to get no help from them whatsoever. So maybe if you could bring it up with them, what it is we should do.
We would certainly do that, and I can tell you, they certainly want to work with cities, and this is one of the ways that we're trying to sort of reach out and develop some more productive relationships by working with them. And in fact, we intend to probably, at least a biannual, if not a bit more frequent, have meetings with both the Division of Wildlife and South Suburban, and network all three, and the city, and network all three entities together so that we can be a bit more effective than we have been in the past.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Because clearly, I think we could improve on that, and that's what the intent is.
Great, thank you. That's it.
I have no report. So seeing that there's no more business at hand, we will adjourn and reconvene in the community room at 7 o'clock.